For those listening and watching, my name's councillor Caroline Brook and I'm the chair of the committee. A few housekeeping points before we begin. Can I advise that open parts of the meeting are being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website. In addition, a video recording of the meeting is being made available shortly afterwards. We have a mix of in-person on-line participation today. And for those in the room, please can I ask that you mute your microphone or do you need to speak? Please can I ask you all to speak clearly and remember to use your microphone when you are. Please can everyone ensure that mobile phones and other electronic devices are on silent or switched off entirely? The fire evacuation procedure for those of us in the room, in the unlikely event that it's necessary to evacuate the building with fire alarm sound. Please follow any instructions given to you by staff or fire marshals who will be wearing high disability jackets. All fire exits are marked by green exit signs. Please proceed quickly and come into this assembly appointment, which is in Abbey Gardens. Please do not use the lift. So turning to the agenda, members will recall that our last meeting in July, the committee agreed to adjourn and carry over the remaining business to either a new date in August or to this meeting. As it wasn't possible to find a date when we were all available in August, the agenda items have been carried over to this evening's meeting. I'm proposing a tour to the agenda running order slightly. And I'd like to propose that we take the key one, performance monitoring item, straight after we deal with the key four, performance monitoring. Because that seems sensible to do both one after the other. And as to the two substantial items on the agenda, the general outturn and the HRA outturn report. Originally, these were coming to the committee before the cabinet meeting in July. And we were being asked to come up with proposals. And within them, before cabinet made the decision. So because of the adjournment, we are now reviewing these retrospectively as they've already been approved. With that in mind, I wondered if we could frame our comments to cabinet slightly differently. Essentially ask that cabinet consider our comments prior to their budget options of 2022/23, which will be tabled at cabinet in October. And to us at our normal November meeting. So, thank you. Firstly, apologies. Matthew?
Thank you, Chair. Apologies from councillor Crass this evening, who's been replaced by councillor Lanning. And councillor Horall and Cook are running slightly late, but will be joining us shortly.
Thank you, Matthew. Do I have any declarations of interest this evening? Councillor Lumbey?
Thank you, Chair. I make the cabinet council declaration.
Absolutely, thank you. I have no announcements. I have no announcements to make this evening. So coming to the minutes of the meeting of the 19th of July 2021. Has everybody had a chance to review these and are they agreed?
Agreed, agreed.
Thank you. And public participation, so we have no members of the public registered. But do we now have anybody to speak, Matthew?
Not this evening, Chair, no. But obviously at the July meeting, David Light spoke on behalf of TACT on one of the papers that we got before this evening. And then Mr. Light's comments are in the minutes of the previous meeting.
Thank you, Matthew. It was my understanding, Mr. Botham, that you were going to speak to Mr. Light separately about his comments on one of these papers, did that?
Yes, Chair, I did. And we've exchanged correspondence since that meeting. And David Light thanked us for the answers and was happy with the answers we provided.
Thank you, Mr. Botham. So first of all, coming to the main, remaining items from the agenda of scrutiny meeting on the 19th of July 2021. We come to the general fund outturn paper. The recommendation was that the scrutiny committee comment on the proposals within the attached cabinet report. But as I've previously said, can we consider these in light of the budget options paper, which will be coming to cabinet in October? Do we have any questions on the report itself? Oh, would you like to introduce it, Mr. Councillor Cutler?
I can give it a brief introduction, if you like, Chair, which is fundamentally that the outturn report. If one remembers, back to last September, when we had an emergency budget. At the time predicting what our position would be at the end of the year was difficult. And we had a range of between eight and a half and 12 and a half million pounds. We were assuming could be the bubble. We set the budget based around 10.7 million loss of income. And the outturn has shown that we came in 1.2 million pounds below the budget, which the emergency budget. Which just shows that we did pitch it about right, given the circumstances. And that 1.2 million would have been using some of the transition reserves. So therefore we have used less of the reserves at the year end. I think that's the simplified version of the report.
Thank you, councillor Cutler. Did you want to add anything, Mr. Botham?
Thank you. Just briefly, in addition to that, the report highlights that we did finish the year with the drawing 1.2 million less than reserves, as councillor Cutler has highlighted. That was forecast in the February budget report, that when we set the budget for the current year. So the current year budget did take account of that position. So there isn't an additional 1.2 million that we have. We've already built that into our projections for the current year. With regards to the current year, I think at the time when the report was drafted, we were still concerned that there may, we were obviously monitoring progress very carefully. With some concern that there may be a need for a revised budget in the next month or so. And that isn't the position of the government. We are progressing with our current forecasts, based on the original budget we're setting, everyone. Sorry, just in addition, councillor, we did have a, I did meet with a number of the members of the committee prior to the July meeting. Where we covered a lot of, a number of questions that members had, which I think Matthew was circulated prior to tonight. But obviously happy to take any other questions or clarify any of those points as well.
Thank you, Mr. Botham. Yes, so as a reminder, Mr. Watson kindly sent round a reminder of the discussion that we'd had in advance of the previous scrutiny meeting on the outturn paper. And some of the questions that had been answered, particularly councillor Crass. So they will be included with these minutes, will they? Perfect. So with that in mind, coming on to the general outturn paper. Do we have any comments on the main report itself? Councillor Power?
Thank you, Chair. I do have a question about 12.3 on page 20 regarding the increase in bad debts and the shortfall on the compensation from the government. I would like to know what the bad debts were for this year and how this compares with previous years, if that would be possible.
Mr. Botham?
Yeah, we were anticipating the level of debt on business rates to increase. And that is exactly what we experienced. So we had bad debts projected at 330,000. The outturn was 804,000, so significantly above that. The net cost to Winchester of that was 94,500 pounds. And so in addition to what we were expecting. So the remainder of that was obviously picked up by station 31.
Chair, thank you, Mr. Botham. Councillor Lumbey?
Thank you, Chair. A couple of questions, which I did ask of four, and if there was a sort of following up. One is on page 26 on the homelessness resourcing. It was a question that's been floating around for a bit, so I wonder whether it was any news. We've got this table which shows the number of officers that we have, that East Hants have and easily have, and the caseloads are also. And we were looking at whether there was a cost comparison, i.e. that actually, whether we were looking in terms of this comparison. Apples and apples or apples and pears, because of different seniorities and costs, and whether there was a lesson to learn from that. So I think Mrs. Knight was looking at that. I don't know whether Julie has been able to unearth anything on that.
I don't have the detail to hand, Chair. What we can confirm is that the costs of homelessness in Winchester City is higher than the other authorities. That's something that is partly due to the nature of the district and the county town, the impact that has on homelessness. But also, and probably more so in reflection of our approach to homelessness prevention. Members may be aware that we achieve the national gold standard for homeless prevention. And that's all about preventing homelessness. So we invest heavily in that area, which means that our unit costs are higher than some of our neighbours. I would also suggest our performance is reflected elsewhere.
Councillor, can I ask you to switch your microphone, please? Thank you. Councillor Lumbey?
Thank you, Chair. The other thing was in relation to Bishop Hall Depot, where the question I'd asked was about the level of rent being paid by the fire brigade. And it was confirmed by, I think Geoff probably, that it was a market. Does the market figure reflect what was in the appraisal? Or is the appraisal turning out better or worse, from what I expected?
My understanding is that we are pretty much in line with the appraisal. Demand for the remaining units is very high. So we're confident that the projections of the appraisal will be achieved.
Thank you. Councillor Botham?
Thank you, Chair. I had a question on page 24, 17.2. It's about the major investment reserve. You note that it is historically low. And I just wondered what it had been in previous years? And how does the figure compare with other district councils, the comparable size? And within that, what would we hope it to be? What would be the best figure to give us the most flexibility? Thank you.
Sorry, I can't just. Sorry, because sometimes I say other reports, I just have to kind of think so. And the major investment reserve is the approach that we've adopted. I wouldn't say that's necessarily typical of other councils. So comparing light with light with other councils is difficult. Our level of reserves is not as high as some of our neighbouring authorities. So we don't have the luxury of significant flexibility in our reserves. But for investing in major projects as we move forward, we have typically used the major investment reserve as our fund for significant works. And you'll see in the appendix, sorry, appendix C. At the end of March 2020, the major investment reserve was at 7.6 million. But that reduces significantly over time, largely impacted by the sports leisure park. But also the investment in central Winchester that has been proved in previous committee budgets as well. And you'll see by 2024, where 2023, we're anticipating that reserve being double and a half million. Which is much lower than we would like it to be. So one of the tasks in developing the medium term financial strategy is how we could replenish that reserve. So it could support future investment as we move forward.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions on the main body of the report? I just had one. At 20.17, talking about the EV charging points and the two that have been delayed. I just wondered, thinking about project options and things going forwards, was there any more plan for those? Being as there's a lot of talk of hydrogen cars and things like that. I just wondered what the thoughts were for future budgets?
How we move forward with the EV charging programme is under consideration for part of the carbon program. So no firm plans brought on the table as we speak. And it is a very, very fast moving technical area as well. So obviously, Mr. Ingram and his team are watching that. The points that weren't in there, I think are in now St Peter's Street, went live last week with a report. So the programme is substantially implemented as planned. How we move forward with further expanding that is yet to be determined.
Thank you, Mr. Botham. Okay, so we come on to appendix one. Does anybody have any questions on appendix one? Councillor Botham?
I'm sorry, Chair. I've still got one more question on the main body of the paper. I'm still on page 30. I didn't realise we were moving so quickly. It was about the Guildhall Cafe, which is point, if it is 20.18. I noted that there was an investment of 177,000 to make the modifications to allow the new rental property to go in. And I just wondered sort of how long it was going to take to recoup that investment? If those works were purely for making it a viable commercial site?
Chair, I don't have the investment record for that one to hand, but I can confirm that. But I can go back to the office. I can take that, I can confirm.
Thank you. Would we be able to put that in a minute? Yep. Councillor Lanning, do go ahead.
Yep, there was an increase in costs due to us needing to work at times outside when the courts were in operation in the Guildhall. So in essence, some of the increase was caused by us receiving income into the council elsewhere. But the business plan still stacked up, even with that increase in costs. I have to say, I ate in the cafe last night, had some very nice fish and chips. And there have certainly been a lot of comments about it's really good to have that corner activated again. You know, rather than just having what was quite a dead space there. So I think it was definitely the right thing to do in terms of the council's overall objectives, both financially and in terms of generating more business in the town.
Does that answer the question, councillor Botham?
I was looking at the investment return, but it partially answers. And it definitely, as councillor Lanning has said, I see the benefits both financial and for meeting council plan.
Thank you. So as we were, if both of us could pass that, Mr. Watson's, that would be wonderful. Thank you. Okay, so any questions on appendix one, which is on page 37 of our agenda, please? Appendix two? It's also called appendix C. No, okay. Appendix three on page 41. Councillor Lumbey?
Thank you, Chair. It's probably an education question. I've never really understood with the Winchester town account, how we deal with officer time spent doing their stuff? As opposed to why the district staff and how that's charged and how there's a fair proportion. And so that either the taxpayers within the city are not subsidising in the outside world, or the outside world is not subsidising the city. So I never understood that. So it's just a question of how that works and how the costs get fairly recharged through.
Chair, there will be some dedicated staff within the revenue provision for the town account. An example being the member services officers. So those that directly spend their time on town account work are charged to those services. As far as those who support the services, they will be picked up through recharges to the council as well.
So the formal internal charge. So your work on rebellion, for example, gets charged through to the town. And how does that show?
I need to check where that actually follows through to, but that's the principle. Yeah, that's the principle.
Councillor Power?
Thank you. I think we should be seeing, this is the Winchester town count outturn. We should be seeing the value of that transfer, Chair, in the outturn report, to satisfy the needs of the parishes, who have to fund their staff.
I'll make a note of that, councillor Power, thank you. Any further questions on appendix three? No. Appendix four then on page 43. No, none on there. Appendix five? Does anybody have any comment to make on appendix five? And lastly, appendix six on page 47. Oh, okay. So if we're thinking about the budget options paper going forwards, does that change anymore? Does anybody else have any debatable questions with that in mind? No, so no debate on this paper? Okay. Councillor Botham?
Thank you, Chair. It was really just to congratulate both the cabinet member for finance and also for Mr. Botham and all the officers in the finance team. For really having done such a great job in their prudent financial management during what, of course, has been a hugely difficult financial period. I think being able to produce a balanced budget is no mean feat. And the fact that the council has not had to call on more reserves than they anticipated should be recognised by the committee. I think it's placed the council in a much better position than many other local authorities to navigate our way successfully through the ongoing recovery. And to deliver what is an ambitious programme of measures outlined in the council plan. Not least of all are measures to address the climate emergency and to fulfil our carbon neutrality action plan. So I just would like the committee to note that we should congratulate the officers for the hard work that they've done.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Botham. So we come on to item seven on our agenda, the housing revenue outturn 2021. Again, this one was from our previous meeting scheduled July 2021. So this is, as previously mentioned, also already been approved by cabinet. So it was recommended the scrutiny committee comment on the proposals for the attached cabinet report. Still to pass comments on that. Again, there are notes already from this, which will be circulated for the minutes. So if we come on to the paper itself, would you like to introduce councillor Cutler? Oh, no, apologies, not councillor Cutler. It's not councillor Lanning's, apologies.
Thank you, Chairman. I think, as usual, the officers have done an excellent job on this paper and at looking after the money we have holding the housing revenue account. And I'll just hand over to Richard Botham to say a few words.
Thank you, Chair. The position that's set out in the paper highlights that the HRA completed the year with a net surplus of 2.6 million. Which was an increase of 1.45 million on the original budget. Number of contributing factors to that are set out in the paper. So, you know, a fair number of staff wasn't planning on highlighting any of those in particular. The report was subject to the questions from members at the previous committee. It's also been presented in detail to TACT at their meeting. And TACT endorsed the papers and supported that. There were some questions obviously raised by Mr. Light at the last scrutiny meeting. Which really focused around, you know, he wanted to make sure there was still a commitment to social housing, which we certainly confirmed in response to that. And he did have questions around the allocation of staffing costs, which I've been able to reassure them. That any staff charged to the HRA will only be related to delivering services to tenants. And it's fully in line with the rig paint under which the HRA operates. Which, as I said, was reassured to both Mr. Light and Monica Gill, who were Ted and Catherine, asked the same question. So TACT endorsed the paper. Probably what was the important factor for the paper was the approval of an additional provision for welfare fund to support residents that are struggling through recent times. And that was approved at cabinet and staff are currently in the process of implementing those proposals as we speak.
Thank you, Mr. Botham. So this is paper SE047, starting on page 49. Does anybody have any comments on the main body of the report itself? Councillor Williams?
Yes, a question on point 11 on risk management. I'm looking down here on sort of community support. It does go over two pages, you see, I have to sort of flick. One of the things, one of the risks was the lack of consultation. I suppose it was a question, with Covid, had that been a bigger issue or not, with actually being able to consult with tenants? Because obviously it says that the risk is that it will reduce their satisfaction. And I just kind of wondered if that's something that had been a bigger problem during Covid or not?
It's certainly been a challenge through Covid. So we obviously have some traditional engagement methods, particularly with TACT, where we would meet with them several times a year in person. And they really struggled, I think, with meeting virtually and using the technology. And we provided a lot of support through that, but they were less productive, probably those discussions. The team responded to that, though, in particular by broadening engagement through digital surveys. And we conducted a large number more digital surveys than we had done previously. So that's how we closed that gap effectively. Obviously, the business as usual through that period was pretty much maintained for housing services. So we would still meet people outside and we did have some sort of face-to-face engagement through that method. But yeah, were particularly challenging, I think, for some of the tax members threatening.
Thank you. Councillor Lumbey?
Thank you, Chair. Can I just ask on that, because you mentioned digital surveys, which are great. Elsewhere in the report, we hear about digital poverty and the lack of access to digital connectivity, which those of us in the rural areas will know is a real concern. And without wanting to speak in generalisations, it's often people who are older, who are less able to use modern technology. And also maybe having a lack of access to it. On that basis, what sort of penetration do we achieve with digital surveys? And how do we address the people who are left behind in that scenario?
And we've adopted a rate of measures to address that. And actually, reaching our wider tenant group has always been a challenge. So one of the challenges that we have with getting engagement through the traditional methods was how do we get younger people involved in TACT meetings and that sort of thing? And they weren't prepared to engage to that. So I think the growth of digital service has certainly seen much greater involvement. So before, we would see reasonable participation and engagement, but that's increased through digital service. So we are reaching people that we weren't reaching before. And to address the risks of digital poverty, as you say, we have a number of programmes. We provide free wifi throughout all of our old person's housing stock. And have run various training programmes to try and maximise that. In fact, actually responses to our digital surveys from all the people don't appear to be, don't appear to be the problem. So we're getting good representation from them. They're still struggling to meet those younger people who can't, who don't want to engage with the council unless there's a particular issue that they have. And so it is a case of maintaining a range of methods and exploiting the opportunities that we've had through the digital survey. I think we did a digital survey on views around energy and efficiency and carbon reduction. And had several hundred responses to that, which we wouldn't have had if you'd have tried to get a meeting in the Guildhall as we had with previous ones.
Thank you, Mr. Botham. Any further, sorry, councillor Becker, sorry. Sorry, continuation of a theme on the point of the digital inclusion. At paragraph 12.8, we've got proposed spending budget of 0.04 million over a two-year programme for digital inclusion. I just wondered what is going to be included in that? If we already have wifi in our older people's housing stock, what else are we doing? Because it does sound incredibly positive.
So what was the paragraph?
12.8. Page 63.
Sorry, I just noticed it's too bad, I fell. It was on the wrong page.
Take your weight.
Counselor Lundy?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, as opposed to some of the previous programmes we've had around the mass rollout of these digital programmes with both wifi and training for older people, this is much more targeted at those on low incomes who may be struggling to afford these things in their own homes. So this is very much more one-to-one support where we'll be able to offer something which is much more individual and targeted at what people need rather than being more general programmes. We're keeping the welfare programmes very flexible because certainly what we've found with our homelessness work is that being able just to do what people need when they need it can be very effective in getting to where you need to be. So it's not specific. It will be what people need when they need it.
Thank you. Counselor Lundy, can you switch your microphone off, please? Do we have any other questions on the main body of the report? Counselor Ferguson?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question on page 59, under 12.3J. It's regarding the void properties. It talks about having overspend on the car, partly that being due to issues with letting void properties. And there's an element of Covid in that. But I just wondered with void properties generally, whether there were certain void properties in our housing stock which we're finding it difficult to let for a longer period than anticipate. And of those, I mean, are they clustered in a geographical area? Are they of a certain type? And what, if anything, are we doing, or could we be doing, to try and make those more attractive to people so we have less? Thank you.
Chair, the point in the report did touch, as we say, on the issues with, there were delays in letting properties in the early part of the lockdown through Covid, where, you know, we gave people the choice, basically, if they were so desperate to move, we supported them to move, but we weren't forcing anyone to sign up to that property at that time. So that created some longer void times. One of the impacts we've seen more recently, though, is there appears to be some changes in demand, particularly around demand for people, for obvious reasons, want to go. So where they have a choice to make, so where they are, some people have to take what they needed, as desperate, where they have a choice, we are seeing some lower demand for some of our two-bed flats as an example at the moment. I wouldn't want to say that that needs urgent action, you know, because we've seen fluctuations in demand several times in recent years. And quite often, they'll rectify themselves or they can be temporary or whatever. But it is something that we're watching very closely. It's something being experienced by other districts as well. And at the moment, it's manifesting itself by just taking a bit longer to let some units. There isn't anything that we're finding we can't let. But it is something we're considering options for at the moment. So that could include looking at our allocations policy to think, well, is it too restrictive? And by some flexible use of our allocations policy, will that help people move into homes quicker? So that's something we'll consider.
Thank you, Mr Botham. Thank you, Chair. Counselor Lundy?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to raise this tonight and I wasn't sure at the right time. Counselor Ferguson has kindly given me the routine. I was over in the Isle of Wight last week and I was told a statistic, which was that they have had an 80% reduction in the amount of rental property available on the island in the last 12 months now. Let's not focus too much on the exact time scale and the exact percentage. The point is the huge drop in rental property that's available. Have we had or are we seeing a similar trend within the district? And if so, does that have any impact on our own portfolio or our plans for it?
Thank you, same way. I haven't seen very latest figures on our letting recently. I don't know if Counselor Lernie has more accurate information she may be able to comment on as well. But certainly we haven't seen anything like that in relation to our own stock. So we're still getting properties, you know, become available and we're letting them, as we say. There has been an impact on private rental sector, partly due to the very positive step that the government took around preventing evictions and ceasing court activity, which has seen, you know, has protected people at times when they needed the protection. So whether that's had an impact on the island, I'm unsure. But whether Counselor Lernie has got anything to add on topic?
Yes, we've definitely seen a shortage in properties in the private sector available to rent, particularly at that lower rental end, you know, which is where people will often end up contacting the council. I talked to a local resident the other day who is now being evicted, you know, as the moratorium comes to an end and just would be very happy to go into another private sector house, but will be ending up on our register because they just can't find anywhere. And ironically, the reason they're being evicted is because their landlord's son couldn't find anywhere to rent either. So we've got this kind of progression going on. So I think it is a concern. I think we'll definitely be, we'll definitely need to monitor that as a council going forward. And we'll definitely need to keep an eye on the impact that might be having on our own housing register and see where we go forward from that.
Thank you, Counselor Lernie, for that answer question.
Yeah, no, it doesn't. It's helpful. It's interesting that there may well be a trend here and it sounds like we are seeing it and it sounds like we do need to, as a council, be looking at that. And maybe it's something that Counselor Weir, your group, might want to, Business Housing might want to look at more as a point. Sorry, that's sort of into debate really, but it potentially is a big issue.
Agreed. It sounds worrying that it might have an impact on potential rental costs and the like. Counselor Williams?
Yes, I'm on page 63, 12.7, on strategic commissioning. So, I mean, it was interesting sort of reading through this about the fact we're providing these really, you know, great services. And it kind of occurred to me that we've got a budget here for a two-year programme. Do we think that this potentially will, as furlough comes to an end and we start to see more and more people perhaps struggling as we're sort of coming out of Covid, is that a budget that can be increased if needed, if there's a need for it or not? Or is it, because it just feels to me, with all of this, like, people struggling to be able to find housing, it does feel like we've probably got a potential issue of more and more people perhaps struggling with jobs, being in less and less secure employment. And, you know, there might be an interest as a council to kind of help in that.
Counselor Lernie?
Yeah, I don't like making budget commitments before talking to Mr Botham first. I can see him looking at me now. Certainly, we'll be monitoring the take-up of this and seeing the direction of travel. If this programme is a success, I think we can certainly see the possibility of extending it into the future, you know, and altering it as it goes forward for best fit to current circumstances. So at the moment, looking at the situation, there doesn't seem to be much reason why we couldn't carry it on, but Mr Botham might want to add an extra note of caution to that.
Chair, no, I would certainly echo what Counselor Lernie is saying. We see this provision is really important and to help our tenants sustain their tenancies. And obviously, we'll be monitoring it very closely. If there is provision there for two years, then problems will, of course, go on longer than two years. So, you know, we, our tenants, you know, we've always worked hard to support our tenants as much as we can. This is giving us the tools to do that more than previously. The HRA is always a balance. Yes, there's always a balance between investing in the revenue and the provision of new homes and maintaining the quality of our stocks, so it's supporting our tenants. And the challenges will come from both sides. And that will be what we'll need to consider as to whether we can continue to support the programmes.
Mr Botham, I'm happy to have a conversation with you to give you all the voluntary organisations that already cover off this stuff in the overview. Okay, any more questions on the main body of the report? No? Okay, coming on to Appendix 1 then, on page 66. Any questions on Appendix 1? Counselor Weir?
Just about my clarification. The 500,000 for the welfare fund, is it coming out of last year's outturn or is it coming out of this year's outturn? I can't see it in here. Just wondering when we can expect to see it appearing on this figure, so to speak.
Yeah, it was approved in the February budget for 21/22. The reason for including it in this report was to get approval for the spend, really. So that was what this gave the opportunity for. So it doesn't appear in these appendices, it will appear in the appendices for future reports.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions on Appendix 1? Appendix 2, on page 67. Appendix 3, do we have any questions? Counselor Lundy?
Thank you, Chair. Again, this is perhaps putting in a question that probably needs to be answered somewhere else, but I see that we have, one of the items for major repairs is kitchen and bathroom renewals. And I came across a situation in my own ward earlier this week where the council were proposing to carry out kitchen renewals for a row of terraced, single-story bungalows for older people. And what we've got a situation there where actually the bathrooms all have baths and old people often find it difficult to get in and out of a bath. One of the residents has fallen, has had quite a major hurt as a result. And I wonder how we assess whether we do kitchens or bathrooms or both? And crucially, do we need to sometimes think, actually, really, these bathrooms are old bathrooms that are no longer fit for these sort of people and actually we should be prioritising bathrooms over kitchens? I think that's probably not a question on the outturn budget, but I wanted to put it out there because it's worrying me.
Yeah, I don't know the specific case, but the current approach to our assessment of this refugee is to replace kitchens every 20 years and replace bathrooms when they need replacing. So there is a time scale for replacing bathrooms. Some bathrooms, you know, tend to be more than happy with them, they last long, but some don't last as long. So it will be assessed on a case-by-case basis. We do, though, have a policy where we don't, by routine, replace baths with showers. What we, the way that gets assessed is through the, I think, on this page, we do have provision for disabled adaptations. So it's on the other capital spending line. So we do spend significant sums on disabled adaptations. So where someone is in need of an adaptation, a shower is an example of that, so a water shower or wet room or whatever, that tends to be where that gets funded. And that's following an OT assessment. So we make sure the right adaptation goes in, it isn't. But showers are, showers by routine are very expensive to maintain. And so we've taken a decision in the assessment of this refugee not to provide them as a certain amount of force. Tenants fit their own quite frequently, but where they're needed, they'll be assessed by OT.
Thank you. Any more questions on Appendix 3? Appendix 4, page 17. No. Appendix 5? Anything on Appendix 6? Counselor Ferguson?
Thank you, Chair. I noticed on the external envelope works that there's a considerable reduction in the budget for the lease of 800,000. That seems like, you know, quite a lot to me. And I wondered what that related to and whether that would have any impact on our sort of retrofitting homes to reduce their carbon footprint.
Chair, the property services team do maintain a very detailed register of requirements and investment programmes. And these programmes change annually to reflect those programmes. So that can be a range of factors that impact on that. It can be, you know, that they've made provision in the programme for roof replacements, they've looked at the roofs, they've got another 20 years of life left in them, so they don't replace them until they need them. So it's that continual assessment of stock condition gets adjusted through that programme. That doesn't relate, though, to our retrofitting programme. We have the separate line further down the page of one and a half million, which was actually increased a lot later, I think, in the year I'm in. So it's under that climate change emergency. Well, that's where the retrofit programme is funded for.
So just for my clarity then, the external envelope works have no impact on the budget for the climate emergency retrofit programme? That's what you're saying, isn't it? The two are related, they're separate?
No, they're separate programmes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody, any further questions on Appendix 6? No, Appendix 7? Counselor Weir?
Thank you, Chair. Just wondered if anybody could lighten us on where we might be going with the Barton Farm Extra Care, which doesn't seem to look as if it's got much future. Thank you.
My understanding is there's provision in the next phase of the development for extra care housing. There has been discussions with our new homes team and Carla as to whether we would be involved in that provision and those discussions are ongoing as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor?
Thank you, Chair. Can it be noted, though, that surely Winchester wish to be part of those discussions with Carla for these homes that were refamed to? Please. Thank you, Chair.
And we saw, they're very positive discussions. I think both parties have been in positive discussions at the moment, as are Hampshire as well.
Thank you. Any further questions on Appendix 7? No? Do we have any debate on this paper? No? Okay, so the only point I have on that, and I will also save my points from the previous one because I didn't relay them back, but the only point I have on this is to note that WCC wish to be part in and continue with the discussions with Carla going forward. As to look into the impacts that the reduction in available rented accommodation could have so that we can head off any issues. Okay, so that draws that paper to the close. As I said, I forgot to mention my points when I concluded the previous paper. So the previous paper, points I had down, if anybody would like to add to it, was Mr Botham to send investment to a response to Mr Watson for purpose of the minutes. Winchester Town Account Info should be including the outturn paper for transparency. And committee notes the hard work of the officers in transparency. And committee notes the hard work of the officers in the work they've done on maintaining the budgets under very challenging circumstances. councillor Power?
Chair, may I just clarify? I couldn't quite hear you. I think it was on the, the town form that staff costs should be shown as a separate line. So the parishes can see that we are accounting transparently with us of staff.
Thank you. I haven't put that in yet. Okay, right. So councillor Horrell was due to introduce the next paper. She'd already sent her apologies, she might be late. So we're going to pop over item eight for now and come on to item nine. We'll come back to the performance monitoring when she arrives. If not, we'll ask Mr Howson to introduce and give us a summary of that paper. So we'll come on to item number nine, the annual scrutiny report, draft annual scrutiny report, page 153 to 164. The recommendation is that we consider making a necessary comment on the content of the report prior to its submission to full council. Does anybody have any questions, thoughts on this paper? Everybody happy to support the paper? Agreed? Agreed. Okay, thank you. Matthew, did you want to say anything else on that?
No, that's fine, Chair. Thank you. It's going to full council from here. So, yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Weir. The scrutiny report, exceptions to forward plan 2020, 2021. There were a few on there. As you can see, the committee considers and makes any necessary comment on the content of the report. Has everybody reviewed the exceptions to the forward plan report? Everybody happy to accept it?
Agreed.
Any further comments on that, Mr Botham?
No, thank you, Chair.
No, thanks. Okay, so we come on to item number 11, to note the forward plan of key decisions. Please do bear in mind that this was July's version of the forward plan. So a lot of the forwarding has been done. So we happen to just agree with that paper?
Agreed.
Agreed. We'll come on to the, the next one later. The scrutiny work programme 21, 22. There was an attached paper on page 175, 178. Has everybody had a chance to look at that? Does everybody agree, support the work plan? Anything anybody would like to add to that? Just to say, it looks very light at the moment. So given we've got the mental health options in Winchester district as a previously raised suggestion, is that something we should be bringing forward, given we have a meeting scheduled for February and no work scheduled at that? There absolutely will be things in February, they're just not on this work plan as yet. And there always are. February is usually a relatively busy month, budgets and lives. So actually, February tends to really fill up, which is why March is the extra one for the community safety partnership. Mr Taylor, did you want to say anything on that in particular?
Thank you, Chair. You are quite correct. Perhaps Matthew could just advance, populate that because we do know that February will be a busy meeting. And as members will be aware, there will be papers associated with the central Winchester regeneration to consider throughout the year at this committee. But councillor Becker is quite correct, you did have an, an item outstanding with regard to mental health support. And if I may take it away to discuss with our lead director who is known to work on that, Lisa Kirkman, because we'd hoped that we would be able to bring a, a series of small bite briefings back rather than one, one for items. So please let me speak to her, Chair. That's okay.
Thank you, Mr Taylor. Anybody else any comments or anything they'd like to add? No? Okay, then can I say that we've agreed with, withstanding those comments that we've just spoken about?
Agreed.
Yep, agreed. Thank you. So item number 13, again, still from our July meeting, was to note the membership of the performance panel. The Q4 performance panel monitoring report had been reviewed by councillors Cook, Crass, Ferguson, Horrell and Williams, because we'd had nominations from both groups, but they haven't been officially agreed. So do we agree to those numbers for the performance panel going forwards?
Agreed.
Agreed. So we were to agree tonight's meeting at July 2020. So we're agreed with that one. But then we have 24th November, 1st February, 1st February, 10th of March. And then we have the performance panels in August, November and February on here. And everybody green noted? Fabulous. Okay, so coming on to tonight's business. Sorry. Record for performance one still, before I move on to tonight's business. Okay. Mr Howson, would you be able to introduce for us, do you have the details and notes of the Q1 finance and performance monitoring review by the panel from Q4, please?
Thank you, Chair. I take the Q4 report first. The performance panel met on the 14th of June to scrutinise the quarter four performance report that included an update on the progress against the five council plan priorities, the key performance indicators, the significant project highlight reports and service demand data for the previous 12 months. The panel members submitted, pre-submitted some questions that they wanted to ask on the report before the meeting. And those responses were circulated ahead of the meeting so that they could be then discussed at the performance panel meeting on the 14th of June. Before you, on the agenda, you've got a copy of the Q4 report, but also a copy of the action notes or action points and notes from that meeting. Each of those action points have been subsequently followed up and those responses were shared with the panel at their more recent meeting when they considered the Q1 report as set out in, in the process that we've got for the performance panel. So it's, if there are any, any questions on those action points or notes, we're happy to respond or answer to those.
Thank you, Mr Howson. Does anybody have any specific comments or questions regarding the Q4 performance panel? Mr Howson? Q4 performance monitoring report? No? Okay, shall we agree that's been noted?
Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Howson. Would you like to come on to the Q1 finance and performance monitoring, including a verbal update from the Chair, who hopefully we will circulate both of those updates with the minutes? Mr Howson?
Sorry, thank you, Chair. The, the performance panel met more recently to go through the quarter one report, which covers the period April to June this year in exactly the same way as it considered the Q4 report. The report was circulated to the performance panel members ahead of that meeting. They were invited to pre-submit any questions that they had on the content of that report. The Q1 report differed slightly from Q4 in that it included an update on general fund and HRA capital and revenue expenditure, which was not included with the Q4 report. Also included was an update on the progress against the council plan priorities, an update on the council's significant projects, as well as the service demand data, and an update on the strategic key performance indicators. The responses from officers to the pre-submitted questions were circulated before the meeting and then read out at the meeting of the performance panel. On the agenda this evening, you've got the Q1 report as well as those notes and action points that, that were raised at that, that meeting. There were a number of action points and questions raised relating to a number of issues in the content of that report, including the local plan, central Winchester, a number of other areas of progress against the, the council plan. Officers are working through those action notes now and will provide a response within the next few days circulated to the performance panel with the responses to those action points.
Mr Howson, does anybody have any further comments on Q1? Mrs Power, councillor Power?
That's crucial, actually. Thank you. I'm very excited by the biodiversity action plan. But having had the opportunity to test it under fire over the last year, I have found that it doesn't have enough on water quality and how we should be working to improve water quality and habitat. And I've also found that there's not enough weather in there for swifts, house martins. And I don't usually worry about swallows, they seem to be doing quite well. I would like to know if there's an opportunity to, to boost the biodiversity action plan in those areas when that may arise.
councillor Murphy, is that something, is it councillor? councillor Cleary? Is it, is it councillor Cleary? Can I either review?
It is myself, thank you. We will be doing a sort of review of the biodiversity action plan next year. So we can certainly consider air quality then, and river quality then, sorry. And we can sort of take it looking forward. I mean, one of the things with our biodiversity action plan is that we're sort of quite limited in resources. And we did choose actions where we knew we could deliver 80% of the things we've put in it. So, but I can definitely raise it with the team and see if we can look at something next year.
councillor Murphy?
Chair, if I may add?
Yep.
We do have two chalk streams in Winchester district. They are rare globally. And I would ask that we do prioritise the water quality in our riverways. I had told you the other week, we do three white chalk crayfish. So now I've got a personal interest in making sure they can continue to stay with us. Thank you.
That's lovely. Thank you, councillor Power. Noted, councillor Murphy. I shall pop it in the notes anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions on the Q1 finance performance monitoring report?
Chair, I know, we undertook our carbon literacy workshops, which was pretty hard work, actually. And I see that we are going, we already in Q1 achieved bronze standard. Is there any chance that we would achieve silver or gold in this year?
Who would like to answer that? Mr Botham?
Chair, I can't comment exactly where we are on, on that trajectory. That's certainly, our ambition is, is to move forward towards, towards silver. But I can ask the, the programme lead to update the committee on the proposals.
Thank you, councillor Power. Any further questions or comments on this report?
councillor Ferguson? Yes, thank you, Chair. I know during the performance panel, we highlighted a question around the local plan highlight report, the fact that the rank status is showing red. And we were told by officers that we are actually on track given the revised timetable. And at the time, we were told that this would could potentially be adjusted. And I just found it was worth publicly to give officers a chance to explain why that's red and that it doesn't indicate that our local plan refresh is sort of not on track, because it is on track, it's just lots has changed. I think that's important that's done here and there. Thank you.
Mr Botham, did you have any response on that at all, further clarification?
Not, not something on Christmas, I don't know if this, Mrs Taylor?
Thank you. Our, our new director, Dawn Ady, is, is with us. And Dawn is taking on strategic responsibility for the local plan. So she may wish to comment. I wasn't at the panel, but I think, and I recall there were items that were marked as red, because it is one of our most high risk projects. And everything edges to red and we continually manage it. But I think Dawn might be able to check with the team. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yes, sorry, I'm over here. Hello. Mrs Taylor's right with regards to it being the high priority programme and therefore on red at the current moment. Having met the team recently this week, I've challenged them to bring their time scales back to me with regards to making sure we've got the time scales. So we'll certainly be reporting on that going forwards.
Is that okay?
Yes, it's a slightly different answer to what we were given at the performance panel, but, but thank you.
Thank you. councillor Horrell, we're just concluding that Q1 performance monitoring, we've already agreed the Q4 performance monitoring. Mr Howson introduced it for us and gave us a summary. So we're just going through those questions. So we said that we attach your reports to the minutes, if that's okay with you?
Well, apologies, Chair, for being late. I was delayed, unfortunately, and then couldn't get into the building again. So thank you for, councillor Lumby, for letting me in. Yes, at the performance panel, actually, the panel all agreed that our reports would come forward to you. So the questions and the follow-ups that we've had from the officers, which we did for Q4 and obviously Q1. So I think that's helpful to everyone who wasn't able, who weren't able to participate. We can give the fullest answers. So yes, I think that they stand in their own right and obviously have been made available for the scrutiny committee. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Horrell. Do we have any further questions or comments? Any debate on this paper? None. So the notes I have on the Q1 finance and performance monitoring are concerned over water quality, swifts, and I couldn't remember the other bird because I was distracted by swallows or all right. No swallows or all right. House martins. No, I hear swallows are all right. And also to ensure adequate, adequate provision regarding our chalk streams and crayfish. Other than that, we note that the performance panel have taken that and we all agree that we will receive their report. So on to the last item on our agenda tonight, item number 16, to note the latest forward plan of key decisions, page 275 to 280. Does anybody have any questions, queries, concerns over that? No, so that's noted?
Agreed.
Thank you. And that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for your engagement. Oh, thank you for your engagement this evening and I shall see you all in November. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.